All right, welcome all. This is called order of the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. This is a work session. And just to clarify, that means that we do not generally do the usual formalities that we would if this was a regular scheduled Board of Commissioner meeting. And there are some slightly different rules that we follow. It's a little more informal. But the essential purpose of this meeting is for us to hear from the staff team, the staff administration team, as to their preliminary recommendations with respect to funding and allocations of the ARPA funds. You will note that we do have some special rules on public comment. Those were distributed. I think that, I don't know if they're posted anywhere else, but we did post them online. And just to review, those who wish to address us are given up to two minutes to do so. They are asked to have no more than one representative per project if you are addressing the projects here this evening. And we will go for a maximum of 30 minutes of public comment initially, and then if there is additional interest in public comment, we'll reconvene the public comment section after we receive the presentation from our staff. So, at the commission, while we did understand that with the federal allocation of $127 million to Kent County, we had the discretion and the ability to go ahead and apply those funds internally to projects that we selected, as a number of public institutions and organizations have done. However, this county commission concluded earlier on that we know that this community has proven itself to be very capable of understanding the challenges facing this community and this county, and being very effective in not only identifying those challenges, but proving ways of meeting those. So, we felt it appropriate to reach out into our community and to partner with you to find those projects that would really, within the scope of where you are working, where the public is working, those kinds of projects that really can transform how we function here in the county. So, we've reached out. I'm not sure we anticipated we'd get $3 billion worth of reach back, but that's kind of what came back at us. So, we've been working hard since then. As many of you know, the first phase of this process involved identifying the projects and having them reviewed with our outside consultants, who were retained for purposes of identifying, how are the regulations applied in this circumstance? Do projects qualify? Are they eligible? Are they not eligible? And are there issues or concerns with respect to eligibility of projects? Once that was completed, we then went through Phase Two, which was a process of having the commissioners go through a grading mechanism. That was done three weeks, maybe four weeks ago now at this point, in which the commission did a grading exercise to identify, how do they prioritize these projects up and down? Obviously, we have a lot of projects, a lot of really good quality projects, and more projects than we have dollars. So, the process has not been easy. Once we completed that, staff were then asked to go through and do the deep dive, the digging in and the analysis, and review, evaluate the more detailed components of that, and then come back to us with the information that we received from the surveys, information received from the grading exercise with the commission, and all of the other information analysis they were able to come up with in their work. And to give us their recommendations as to what projects they recommend we fund, and some estimate or indication of levels of funding. Those are going to be given to us today, this evening. These are recommendations from staff. They are not decisions. We will be making no decision tonight with respect to what projects will be funded. We'll not be making recommendations or decisions with respect to how much. That will then go on after this is done. We'll spend the next couple of weeks working through that process with the expectation that in our December 6 meeting, we'll have a resolution for the commission to consider. If we don't make December 6, Allison's in serious trouble, and that's why. But if that doesn't happen, we have one more meeting in December. Our target is to clearly get this decided before the end of the year. So, with that, that's not even public comment. Now, we will go to public comment. And by the way, thank you, commissioners, for joining us this evening. I know this is a little extra out of the ordinary, and we'll see how long this takes, so I may have to thank you again when we're done. All right. With that, I'll open the public comment. I've already reviewed the public comment general rules, but again, if you are interested in commenting, I believe there was a sign-up sheet in the back here. So, Lisa, you have the indications on the number and the sequence. So, if you have the names and the projects...
I do, Mr. Chair.
That would be great. So, let's go through them in the sequence you received them, identify the individual and the project number. And if your name is called, will you please step forward to the podium? And you have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll begin at number 81, and they will go in sequential order. Number 81 is Ellen Carpenter, project number 242. And on deck, we have Judge Sturkenberg, project number 171.
Oh, please move, yeah, move that close to you. Thank you.
Thank you for opening this meeting for comment. I'm Ellen Carpenter, Executive Director of Ronald McDonald House Charities West Michigan, representing project number 242. RMHC keeps families together while a child is hospitalized. We exist so families can heal together. We cover their basic needs, a clean room with private bath, homemade meals, transportation, and more for parents, caregivers, and siblings. And most importantly, no family ever receives a bill. We are the only free hospitality house in Grand Rapids. Few families can afford days in a hotel, let alone weeks or months. We are full with a waiting list. We do not receive any federal, state, or government funding, nor do we receive any funding from McDonald's. We get our license and our ability to be a Ronald McDonald House from McDonald's. Rather, we've built a sustainable revenue stream through donors, events, and local grants to cover all of our operating expenses every year. We are part of the healthcare continuum in Grand Rapids. We house families with all of local hospitals with pediatric services, including Helen DeVos Children's Hospital, Mary Freebed, Trinity Health, Pine Rest, and Forest View. We are so grateful for the investment and program expansion being made in these facilities, and the impact on RMHC will be significant. The ARPA funds will allow us to grow at the same pace as local pediatric medical services. Expanding our mission will allow us to realize our vision of all families having access to quality medical rehabilitation and mental health care in Grand Rapids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Judge Sturkenberg, number 171. And on deck, we have David Benoit, number 333.
Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to be heard tonight. I do want to give you a heads up. I think I was accidentally signed in twice, and so I'm also on the list later. I thought I was going to be 11th, but here I am second, so I hope I am prepared. I am here on behalf of Project 171, which is the DVCCRT proposal for a domestic violence court. I am the elected judge in the city of Kentwood, and I would like to encourage you to consider this proposal for a domestic violence court. Because domestic violence is everywhere, it does not discriminate upon wealth, or race, or education level, and it can be found in every corner of Kent County. And that's why this proposal is so valuable. It envisions a backbone of support for those in domestic violence situations, for people in all walks of life. It does not just focus on the Grand Rapids city. The 52,000 people of Kentwood will benefit, and it will be available to assist them, as well as those in Wyoming, Walker, and the outlying areas in Kent County, against a social ill that has long-term effects on children and families. A DV court will enhance abuser accountability and increase safely victim participation in the criminal justice process. With the jumpstart of ARPA funding, the DVCCRT can build a model that will be sustainable through additional funding that will become available beginning in 2025. In my city of Kentwood, domestic violence filings, new cases, are up 40% in the last two years, and homicides from intimate partner violence have doubled. The funding available through ARPA will allow this project to be transformational, giving DVCCRT the capacity to convene... Is that my two-minute warning?
Oh, I should have warned you. There's this little beeper thing.
Oh, what do I...
When you hit the two minutes, the little beeper goes off to give you notice of that.
Well, I will just finish my sentence then.
Please do.
We'll create a multidisciplinary team to provide immediate response and intervene in high lethality cases. I strongly encourage you to consider this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have David Benoit, project number 333. And I've taken a look at the cards, Mr. Chair, and I think I should be okay, but if I do butcher your name, I apologize in advance and would just ask that you constructively correct that.
Thank you very much. You said my name correctly, so a lot of people don't do that, so thank you.
I think yours might be the most difficult one, so it's all downhill from here.
My name is Dave Benoit. I am the representative of GR MiFi. I am the creative director there, and I'm representing on behalf of Jasmine Fuentes, Victor Williams, and Rodney Brown. We're going to withhold, I'm going to keep our regular two minutes, but I also have my coworkers up here. There are creators that we work with in our building. So, GR MiFi stands for Grand Rapids Film Incubator. And so, I was able to quit my job of seven years working for General Motors to pursue my dream to work in film and media. And so, I took the position and actually demanded the title Creative Director to fill the hole that we needed to kind of create systems in place for us as young professionals to become more self-efficient and work in this billion-dollar industry. And so, we are really in need of more money, more funding, and we have, you know, spent years of working together, creating connections in the media industry, and there are so many jobs that are available to us. And whether it's in lighting, graphic design, 3D work, writing, there's, you know, you guys seen the credits for movies. There's millions of people who work in this industry, and I wanted to give us, Black Brown, we're a very diverse group. We have people from around the country, Egypt, South America, and we want them all to be able to work together and come together and take a part in creating something special. And I do have a few seconds, but I would like to pass that off to my associates, my workers that I work with every day.
I just want to say, since starting GR MiFi, my dreams have went from this to this. I feel like I have endless opportunities and possibilities to do whatever I want in this field, and I think, and we would greatly appreciate it, we were selected for funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ken Estelle, project number 235. And on deck is Eric Williams.
Good evening, and thank you for your very transparent and comprehensive process in determining funding for this fund. My name is Ken Estelle. I'm the President and CEO of Feeding America West Michigan, and I'm here to speak on support of our Nourish Tomorrow funding proposal. Our food bank receives large volumes of food from the food industry, including retail stores, food distributors, producers, and many farmers. We transport, inspect, repackage, and store that food, and then distribute it to over 280 partners in Kent County, including food pantries, meal programs, shelters, and mobile food distributions. Feeding America West Michigan has acquired a larger facility, and we're moving our headquarters from Comstock Park to 3070 Schaefer in Kentwood. We requested a consideration of $5 million from the Kent County ARPA funds to help with the renovation of this building, turning it into our new headquarters. Five million represents about 28% of the cost, and we are very confident and on a good path to cover this remaining 72%. This expansion from our current 55,000-square-foot facility to 121,000-square-foot facility will allow us to have an incredibly positive impact to reduce food security for about 70,000 of our neighbors in Kent County, who worry about feeding their families on a regular basis. This expansion is dramatically increasing our refrigeration capacity for nutritious and healthy food, allowing us to collect and distribute more fresh produce, dairy, and protein to families in need, which, by the way, are probably some of the most expensive food items in the store these days. Additionally, we anticipate increasing our food distribution by about 30% within the first five years. We also anticipate increasing our volunteer opportunities from about 35 volunteers a day to over 75 a day. And I would say, although this is a one-time funding opportunity for us, the positive impact that this will make in Kent County will be felt for decades, and I thank you all for considering our request.
Thank you.
Next, we have Eric Williams for project 10. And on deck, we have Troy Reinstra.
Eric Williams, I'm with United Methodist Community House, co-director there with Carla Moore, and we are number 10 in the ARPA proposal, funding proposal catalog. I appreciate the opportunity to reiterate the importance of this project and our request for funding. We serve the entire Kent County with many programs through the Kent County Senior Melody and Other Older Americans Act. We provide congregant dining in collaboration with Meals on Wheels, and we are licensed to provide childcare for up to 100 children, and we've also started a fresh market located in a food desert. Kent County consists of almost 150,000 people who are over the age of 60 and who are taxpayers and voters, and yet our county does not have a major older adult activity center. If you go to Allegan County, they have Evergreen Commons, and they serve hundreds of older adults every day. We don't have that. UMCH's project is designed to do the following, to provide childcare for up to 48 more infants and toddlers at an affordable rate. We want to offer, we will offer childcare for second-shift workers, and that's really, really, a gap in our, in our community. We will offer healthy living options for up to 2,000 seniors per week, 2,000 per week. We will increase transportation services with our shuttle fleet. And finally, working in collaboration with GBSU, we will also have an intergenerational research institute at the owner's center. The total project is $40 million, and we have successfully raised $22 million toward that goal. We need to raise another $8 million before we begin our capital campaign, and it is so crucial in helping us to better serve Kent County. We are also grateful to have strong bipartisan support from our state senate, senate, and house members, and they've been just unbelievable. The state has contributed $3.4 million to this project, and we're excited about that. One more thing. The project will be a glowing example, a glowing example of Kent County's commitment to the residents in our community, to ensure that we are cared for for all ages. And the goal is aligned with Talent 2025 in the right place as well. So, we've worked on this project for four to five years. Some of you have had a chance to visit. We invite you to rest, to come take a look. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Next, we have Troy Reinstra, project number 145. And on deck, Nicole Hofer, project 144.
Good evening, Commission. Thank you for the opportunity for me to present before you. My name is Troy Reinstra. I am a survivor of domestic abuse, and I am also the co-founder of the Coalition to Oppose Domestic Abuse Otherwise Codea. I bring my experience as a community organizer and a policy change and implementer at the state level to my work. As a leader in the Clean Slate Initiative, which you're familiar as outreach, excuse me, as outreach director and the director of Nation Outside, along with Safe and Just Michigan, that was my task from 2016 until 2020. Our project is number 146, Personal Protection Order and Firearms Enforcement Plan. In 2021, there were 19 murders in Kent County. 10 of those were domestic. According to the judge, the numbers have doubled. I don't know what the numbers are this year, but that's startling. Of the 10, of the 19 murders, 10 of those were domestic, 7 of those were men, including one, one three-year-old boy. There were also three women. One of them was pregnant. There were eight instances where firearms were the result of death, and in our proposal, we address the fact that in Kent County, we do not collect firearms from a person who has a personal protection order out against them. And in addition to the 19 murders, 10 of those domestic, five of those were intervening parties, serving personal protection orders, trying to provide safety for their loved ones, their interveners. Our focus is on the first 72 hours of a person seeking a protection order. Those are the most dangerous and most lethal statistically to a person who is newly leaving their partner, saying, "I want to be safe, and I want to be free." We believe that PPOs also matter, as demonstrated by people who seek them out in Kent County. 2,400 have been sought. Pardon my ending, but I will note that our proposal is the only one that cites Personal Protection Order and firearm collection as a concern for this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Nicole Hofer, project number 144. On deck, Jim Davis.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for your time tonight. I'd like to thank you for your consideration of funding. My name is Nicole Hofer, and I'm the Director of Community and Economic Development for the City of Wyoming. I'm here tonight representing the Wyoming City Center Pedestrian Bridge and Trail Project, number 144 on your sheets. This project is a once-in-a-general, once-in-a-generational opportunity for our community. It will have a transformative impact, not only for Wyoming's residents, but for the West Michigan area and Kent County. Cost-benefit analysis showed an economic impact of over $140 million. The pedestrian safety improvements would provide passage over 28th Street, a state trunk line highway with a five-to-seven lane cross-section. Most importantly, these new non-motorized trails and bridge connection provide opportunities for residents in our underserved neighborhoods to have connections to new employment centers, as well as amenities that they would need in their everyday life, grocery stores, pharmacies, etc. I thank you for your time tonight, and I'm very excited to have this project before you.
Thank you.
Next, Jim Davis for project 206 with a star and 208.
Hi there. Again, my name is Jim Davis. I'm the Director of Housing for Family Promise here in Grand Rapids and throughout Kent County, here in West Michigan, in fact. And I'm just grateful for an opportunity to share our hope, along with many of those present and those who cannot join us tonight, that the housing stability spectrum be addressed. I'm sure this is a term that you've been introduced to or have worked with. We have a housing stability spectrum here in Kent County, from unhoused all the way to housed by choice. And several people have applied to address the unhoused population. When I think about this opportunity here before us with ARPA funds, you have the ability to address what the county's needs are in one fell swoop through several organizations. Our project 208 would be one of those, and we would greatly appreciate that. It would be a shame, when we talk about transformative opportunities and transformational change and longevity and sustained impact, to not use these dollars to address the affordable housing crisis. Just a quick story about project number 206. We have a mobile home park owner who is still semi-local and still close to us at Family Promise, sitting on a property that he receives calls on, a park with many homes, up to 100 pads across his two small mobile home communities. And those parks will be sold, I promise you, and they will be sold to someone who will take all of the current housing stock. And over the course of time, on average, three to six months, they'll receive one house at a time, and instead of keeping and maintaining affordability, they will get rid of those homes. They will bring in brand-new homes, which will allow lot rents to go up, their value on the parks will get higher, and they will resell them to more investors, who will continue to do the same. We're not just creating affordable housing, we're maintaining affordable housing. We're doing that through ownership, and project 206 is certainly that transformative affordable housing change that you wish to see, and we're excited to partner with you as you decide on these ARPA allocations. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my apologies, I did not give a heads up to Mike Gusweiler for project number nine. And on deck is Fable.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm Mike Gusweiler, President of the West Michigan Sports Commission. The Sports Commission is a nonprofit that was born out of the county to have an impact on the 5% lodging tax that's collected through the county. We just celebrated 15 years, and I would say the work that we've done certainly has been transformational in those 15 years, and we look to continue that. Over those 15 years, it's been over 1,000 events that we've hosted or brought in, nearly 2 million participants and spectators that have come and visited our region, and it's added up to an estimated $557 million of direct visitor spending. Our Myers Sports Complex is a part of that. Over the course of its eight years that we built and own and operate that to have this continued impact, it has had 148 teams come through, 7,500, 148 events, 7,500 teams, and brings in about $5 million of direct visitor spending annually. It also serves as a community asset for recreation for local teams and clubs, and also has a miracle field for kids with cognitive or physical disabilities to be in an all-inclusive environment. I mentioned we want to expand on that. We see capacity opportunities to continue to have an increase and bring more people into our community. We see parity and equity opportunities, and also to continue the work of the miracle field. So, thank you for your consideration. It's project number eight in Parks and Rec, and certainly appreciate this time again.
Thank you.
Next, we have Fable for number 39. And on deck, Victor Williams.
Hello, Honorable Commission. My name is Marcel Price, or Fable. I am the current Executive Director of the Diatribe, and once upon a time, our poet laureate in the city of Grand Rapids, the first poet laureate of color in our city's history, the youngest in city history, as well as the first without a college degree. The reason I bring that up is because I feel like I am an everyday extraordinary Grand Rapidian here talking to you guys about a once-in-a-lifetime investment, to bring something to life that is truly extraordinary and that hasn't been done before. The Diatribe is an organization that works in every single one of your schools, all across Kent County, helping young people to talk about the issues that they're struggling with the most, whether that's domestic violence at home, or whether that's their mental health. And what we're going to be doing is bringing to life far more than an arts and culture center. There's going to be truly affordable housing in the upstairs of this space, so that true everyday people can afford these homes and not just developers continuing to make monies on the, on these profits, or on these properties. There's going to be business fronts and enterprise that's truly hyper-affordable to ensure the businesses are sustainable, as well as we'll have a youth hangout space and collaborative working space on this site. I'm somebody who truly has an unconditional love for Grand Rapids, and that's why we're bringing this idea to life. I'm somebody who has given my all to be here, and as somebody who grew up in this city that is or was cash poor, I really want this idea to come to life, to give people a sense of hope, to show people that they can come to Grand Rapids and they can truly create life-changing things. We're not some big-box organization. We're not some organization that is a part of some bigger organization that's bankrolled by people with a lot of capital. We truly need this support in order to make this possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Victor Williams, project number 329. And on deck, DeAndre Jones.
All right. Hello, Commission. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Victor Williams. I'm the President, founder of Boston Square Neighborhood Association. We are the only African-American-led, founded neighborhood association in the city of Grand Rapids. As I stated before, we are the only neighborhood association that's unfunded, strictly resident-driven by the power of neighbors and our own finances. And so, the work that we've been doing in Boston Square is significant to the entire county, significant to the long-term community of Boston Square, and we really need your support. Our Resident Equity Initiative will empower long-term residents of Boston Square with economic equity through our Savings Collaborative. Our Savings Collaborative will teach residents to save and build credit through our digital app and debit card while matching contributions to support residents in their desires to purchase homes and to take advantage of entrepreneurship opportunities in Boston Square. The Boston Square Savings Collaborative is, in essence, an economic savings group on steroids that will support long-term residents with entrepreneurial dreams, to bring those dreams to reality, and help build Boston Square into the next hotspot in the city of GR, the only one that has a focus on empowering African-Americans, I would say. For those of you who travel often through the corridor of Kalamazoo and Burton, right there between, on Kalamazoo, between Burton and Hall, that's the area I'm talking about. Amplify GR is developing 10 acres of land there. We'd like to build a community-owned grocery store there through the Savings Resident-Driven Savings Collaborative, as well as eventually, one day, turn this Resident-Driven Savings Collaborative into a financial institution owned by the residents of Boston Square, empowering them with the economic staying power to sustain gentrification, high taxes, that, all of these things that come with development. So, please consider us, number 329, Boston Square Equity-Driven Initiative. Please consider us. Please consider us for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, we have DeAndre Jones, number 26, and at this time, this is the last card.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, DeAndre.
How you doing, everybody? Sorry, I got a slight headache. But first of all, I want to say congratulations on everybody that got re-elected or went to the next level, because I'm tired of the campaign literature. I'm glad election season is over, for sure, for sure. I'm not going to lie to you. But my project is number 26, but I don't want to talk about my project. I just hope that you guys consider the projects of people of color. This is the second worst city for economic development for African-Americans in the state of Michigan, the second-largest city behind the city of Detroit, which has the largest African-American population in the nation. And I remember when our city government gave out our funding, they got $19 million. And for the Third War, then, it's where the majority of the crime goes on, it's where a lot of people of color stand, it's where, as Mr. Fable says, where a lot of hope is needed, that's where a lot of investment is needed. And so, I believe if you help enough people, eventually somebody will help you. And I believe I've done that, because Commissioner Burrow is trying to help me build something of my dreams. And I just really believe that if you continue to just give back selflessly, then people will really help you, and I've actually witnessed that. So, I wanted to use my time to talk about the Third War, South Side of Grand Rapids. I hope that you guys consider the projects of people of color, because they need this investment. This is a historical investment, when we are historically systematically just not in the best economic shape for us people of color. We've got 11,000 businesses that generate over $250,000 in revenue, only 70 of those businesses are people of color. So, I'd like for you guys to consider those projects. And of course, I'd like for you to consider mine, but I'd really be happy to see other people get those projects and their ideas come to real life, because I believe if I keep doing it, if I don't get that investment, eventually my dreams will come true, too. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. You have a few more that...
For the second period.
Okay. All right. With that, we will...we do have a second opportunity for public comment. We will, however, at this point, move to the substantive presentation from our administrative staff, and I will call on Al Vanderburg to step to the podium and present us with the staff recommendations.
This is a quick review. As we get into the meat of the presentation, Kent County was awarded $127,605,807 in ARPA funding. These funds provide a rare opportunity to make long-term strategic investments within the county organization and thus our region. The county identified five priority groups for the funds. These groups broadly align with the eligible funding categories under ARPA while being reframed to best serve Kent County: community health, quality of life, infrastructure, economic innovation, and workforce development, improving government operations. The county strives to have a robust engagement process and to be as inclusive as possible with the engagement. We had two main forms of engagement. The first was direct community outreach, including a number of forums. Also, the second was our online presence. We also created a portal for community organizations to submit a formal funding proposal. A total of 319 community proposals and 13 internal county proposals were submitted for board consideration. The majority of proposals received fell into the quality-of-life funding category, followed by workforce development and community health. Eligibility, sustainability, feasibility, and impact were the four filters that proposals were looked at by Guide House, our contracted consultant, and also our staff who worked along with Guide House after they made some of the initial eligibility determinations. ARPA project recommendations. Today, I'm here to present the funding package recommendations that our internal staff team has put together, and this package includes 29 projects from 22 organizations that cover 16 themes that emerged throughout the ARPA process. I want to stress that these are staff recommendations for you to consider. You're not voting on these projects, as Chair Steck mentioned earlier tonight, but rather hearing the staff recommendations with exact proposals and funding recommendations. The board will vote on projects and ARPA allocations at an upcoming meeting. Okay, so, beginning with internal projects. First, lead remediation. Staff is recommending allocating $3.8 million to address lead paint and lead in plumbing fixtures in collaboration with education and training for long-term support of lead abatement efforts. The lead paint portion of the proposal would remediate lead paint in homes within qualified census tracts built prior to 1978. The plumbing fixtures portion of the proposal would provide funds for fixture replacement in homes which are not eligible for other lead programs and which Kent County Health Department reports have had multiple youth residents with elevated blood levels. The third portion of the allocation supports the lead remediation work by educating and training a minimum of 600 contractors, landlords, homeowners, and others on lead safety and safe work practices. Medical examiner facility. A new medical examiner facility, as the current 37-year-old facility is undersized and aged, ill-suited to meet the need for modern technology, and suffers from operational and administrative fragmentation due to staff at two locations. Staff is recommending $6 million in funding, as a new, modern facility will provide for consolidation of staff, an improved and enlarged autopsy area, and better accessibility and proximity to regional roadways. This project is transformational because it meets a long-term need for the community and allows for the medical examiner's office to better meet the needs of all stakeholders. Behavioral Health Crisis Center. Since the end of 2021, Trinity Health St. Mary's and Network 180 have been working together on standing up a behavioral health crisis center. This innovative facility will include a severe crisis stabilization unit and a behavioral health brief intervention service to serve all residents of Kent County. Staff is recommending nearly $4 million in funding, because the Behavioral Health Crisis Center will revolutionize behavioral healthcare in Kent County by providing a 24/7 no-wrong-door concept for adults with any or no insurance. Kent County Parks, Grand River Greenway. Staff is recommending $10 million to Kent County Parks to support the Grand River Greenway and other county park improvements. We'll work out the specific allocation of this $10 million in the months ahead. School Safety Radio Network. Staff is recommending more than $2.8 million in funding to support the Sheriff's Office enhancement of the School Safety Radio Network. An 800-megahertz system would be transformational, because a dedicated radio console would be deployed in every K2 facility in Kent County, giving schools access to a two-way communication device and access to school safety radio network monitored by the Sheriff's Office dispatch. The radio system is specifically designed for use within a school setting and would make law enforcement more equipped, better equipped, to respond to school emergencies. Capital enhancements for facilities serving older adults. The Area Agency on Aging of Western Michigan has been a long-term partner of the county as the administrator of the senior millage. Therefore, we are recommending between $500,000 and $1 million to allow the Area Agency on Aging to use their proven vetting process for allocation of funding for capital improvements, and these once-in-a-lifetime transformational dollars will allow deferred maintenance projects to be completed, as well as needed facility improvements. Okay, now we move from county recommended projects to community recommended projects. And we'll start with the Kent County Homes Fund. Investment in a revolving fund for housing will allow the county to direct low- or no-interest loans to affordable housing projects across the county. These loans would then be paid back into the fund, allowing the county to have an ongoing fund to mitigate the lack of supply at different points of the housing continuum. Staff is recommending $15 million to $20 million in funding, as it will help reduce the current high housing cost burden experienced by residents across the economic spectrum. The project is transformational, because in the ARPA survey, residents identified affordable housing is a key need and desire for the community, and this project will allow developers of housing at different price points to meet the needs for housing throughout the entire Housing Next: Equitable Zoning Initiative, focused on zoning. This kind of goes hand-in-hand with the Kent Home...County Homes Fund. The project would develop a data-driven approach to mapping current zoning parameters to identify barriers to development and develop a program to support local municipalities that are prepared and already seeking to undertake amendments to their zoning ordinances to allow more housing choice in their communities. Staff is recommending $500,000 in funding, as it will support Housing Next and local municipalities to work toward fulfilling the housing need by creating opportunity for more housing types at a diverse range of price points. The Diatribe, Emory Arts and Culture Hub. This is a redevelopment project located in an area of disinvestment that will renovate and improve a large property in the Burton Heights Business District to create a creative hub that promotes upward economic mobility for a marginalized community. Staff is recommending $2 million, as it will create opportunities for youth empowerment, community-driven economic growth, and foster a sense of belonging. Amplify GR Boston Square Hub. This proposal is part of a $100-million redevelopment effort in the Boston Square Neighborhood. The project will construct the Boston Square Community Hub, a facility dedicated to enhancing the health and well-being of neighbors, and includes an early childhood center, a bank, an event and performance space, office space for Amplify GR, wellness spaces, etc. Staff is recommending $4 to $6 million in funding, as it will offer services and programming that will enrich the community by addressing health, economic, and educational disparities. The Junior Achievement Free Enterprise Center: Building Futures, Inspiring Dreams. Junior Achievement serves approximately 25% of the K-12 students in Kent County and 94% of the school districts. The Free Enterprise Center proposal funds the facility to house three new learning labs, including Junior Achievement BizTown, Junior Achievement Finance Park, and Junior Achievement Entrepreneurship Incubator. It is anticipated that 20,000 students in Kent County will be served by the Free Enterprise Center. By bringing the learning lab opportunity to Kent County, participating youth can prepare to enter the workforce, manage their finances, and create businesses. Over $14 million has been received for the project to date from various sources, and staff is recommending $1 million of ARPA funds. Eating America West Michigan: Nourish Tomorrow Advancement Campaign. This project will allow Feeding America to move to a newer, larger facility that will allow for expansion of programs and services. Staff is recommending $2.5 million in funding this proposal, because Feeding America plays a critical role in addressing food insecurity and food pantry needs in our community, and this expansion will allow them to innovate their programming to meet the growing need for better, affordable, more nutritious food to meet the needs of families who access their food offerings. Immunity Spay-Neuter Initiative Partnership: Preventative Animal Control by Increasing Pet Owner Access to Veterinary Care. Excuse me. The Community Spay-Neuter Initiative Partnership, or commonly known as CSNP, provides affordable spay-neuter services and other veterinary care. With spay-neuter as a longtime core service aimed at reducing stray animals, CSNP has responded to additional affordable veterinary needs as a pilot program. In 2021, a capital program was launched to acquire 12,000 to 15,000 square feet of additional space needed to continue piloted services. Staff is recommending $1 million to support the expansion of CSNP's veterinary facility, which will allow provision of affordable care to 30,000 pets annually, or a 50,000 increase over pets served in 2021. We also see this as a natural partnership for our animal shelter as well. West Michigan Sports Commission. The Sports Commission is proposing an $11 million expansion and enhancement of the West Michigan Sports Complex to address opportunities that will increase visitor spending, expand girl-specific sports parity, and accommodate pickleball, a growing sport aimed at a higher percentage of senior participants. Staff is recommending funding this project at $500,000 to $1 million to enhance sports offerings and make West Michigan a destination for sporting activities while adding additional green space for overall recreation. Wyoming City Center Bridge and Trail Activation. The proposed bridge and trail network are part of a mixed-use development to include two pedestrian bridges, 4.6 miles of trails, housing, civic space, commercial space, and office space. Staff is recommending $6 million in this public-private partnership that transforms the city of Wyoming by safely connecting underserved neighborhoods to employment, schools, green spaces, and other amenities. Kent County Youth Agricultural Association, the Grand Agricultural Center of West Michigan. The Kent County Youth Fair proposal would repurpose a 140-acre former golf course to establish a state-of-the-art campus that represents the county's agricultural history and agribusiness sector. Staff is recommending $5 million for the opportunity to establish an agricultural education and event facility. The youth STEM education provided through the facility could support the agribusiness sector by creating a pipeline for careers in the sector. That supports sustainability of agriculture and increases awareness of the critical importance of agriculture to long-term food supply, public health, and even national security. It will also transform the fair experience for people with mobility challenges by offering accessible parking pathways, building entries, and seating. John Ball Zoo Expansion and Enhanced Community Engagement. Staff is recommending between $6 million and $10 million for infrastructure for the zoos necessary for the zoo to launch and complete its forward-looking $100-million master improvement plan. In 2023, the Board of Commissioners will receive a funding and project plan as approved by the John Ball Zoo Board of Directors. Any plan must contain evidence of city engage...of community engagement on the current plan. Grand Rapids Public Museum: West Entry and Gathering Space. The Grand Rapids Public Museum receives more than 360,000 visitors per year, and museum use has increased by over 258% in the past decade. Currently, the museum does not have space to accommodate this increased demand, especially from school and other large groups. Staff is recommending $1 million for an opportunity for the museum to expand the West Entry lobby to create a fully accessible and interactive space for groups. This project would allow the museum to double the number of annual school visits from 30,000 to 60,000, provide a space for large groups to gather, and allow visitors to flow into the museum unimpeded. Kent County Domestic Violence Action Network. The Domestic Violence Action Network expansion being proposed will address the need for increased survivor-centered systems response and the opportunity to initiate infrastructure to support collective impact strategy for change. The proposal will increase critical services for victims and survivors with... The proposal will increase critical services for victims and survivors with mobile and legal advocacy, mental health support, and wellness resources. Staff is recommending allocated four million dollars for this project for the opportunity to address and prevent a critical element of violent crime that impacts community health, the economy, and equity. Kent County Road Commission: Transforming Kent County's Road Network. Staff is recommending three to six million dollars to improve Kent County's road network. Investment in the project would allow the road commission to complete long-term resurfacing improvements and keep up with local road improvement at a more efficient scale. United Methodist Community House (UMCH 900). U MCH is developing a thirty-two-million-dollar project on self-division aimed at improving services targeted for older adults and very young children. This project will include a new thirty thousand-square-foot senior activity center, six infant-toddler affordable childcare classrooms, an intergenerational center in collaboration with a local university, and an affordable fresh market. Staff is recommending five hundred thousand to one million for U MCH 900. More information is needed from U MCH about the details of the project, and due to this, staff puts forth the option for the board to either directly allocate funds or add more funds to the Senior Citizens CIP where U MCH could apply for those funds with that organization. Grand Rapids Center for Community Transformation: Fuel the Movement Innovative Workforce Development for Economic Mobility. This is a workforce development project located in an area of disinvestment that will focus on job training, youth development, educational attainment, and community and economic growth by providing employment skills training, vocation training, and construction, landscaping, and hospitality. Staff is recommending one million dollars for funding because expanding vocational opportunities, creating innovative partnerships, and helping people with career pathways will increase employment rates and promote economic independence. West Michigan Instruction Institute: Phase II Expansion. This is a workforce development project intended to offer specialized instruction pertaining to high-demand jobs. The organization prepares the workforce and matches workers with companies seeking high-skilled workers. Staff is recommending one million dollars for this project because increasing the number of skilled construction workers benefits not only the individual and their families receiving the training, but also addresses a worker gap left when skilled workers left the area in the last recession. West Michigan Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Workforce Development. Staff is recommending six hundred thousand to one-point-two million for the West Michigan Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. This funding would contribute toward their Building Bridges Through Education Program, which is a workforce development initiative focused on cultivating a Latino talent pipeline while increasing organizational capacity to serve and train the Latinx community in West Michigan. Wyoming Kentwood Chamber: Small-to-midsized Business and Workforce Development Support and Training. Staff is recommending one hundred thousand dollars for the Wyoming Kentwood Chamber. This project aims to support three-hundred-and-fifty existing local businesses and new businesses starting up by providing free business development and training resources over the next four years. Funding would be used to support the facilitation of a monthly training series that will equip businesses with the knowledge they need to thrive and stay in business, as well as create an opportunity to build local service partnerships with cities, businesses, and nonprofits. Hispanic Center of West Michigan: Community Economic and Workforce Development in Kent County's Hispanic Community. Staff is recommending one-point-five to two million for the Hispanic Center of West Michigan. The project put forth will establish a Community Development Financial Institution Fund, CDFI, to help generate economic growth in the Latinx community. This will be done in two phases. The first phase in establishing the CDFI is to conduct a community needs assessment to tailor the resources and programs to the greatest need. The second phase will involve the center becoming certified as a CDIF fund and then partner with community organizations to tailor the response and develop a fund up to one-point-five million. AYA Youth Collective: Live, Work, Thrive. Staff is recommending funding the health component of Live, Work, Thrive proposal at two million. AYA Youth Collective provides access to healthcare for youth who are experiencing homelessness. The healthcare proposal serves youth ages fourteen to twenty-four through expansion of AYA's existing comprehensive healthcare initiative, the CHI, through a partnership with Catherine's Health Center. Youth also receive a real-time crisis support and substance use screening and support, among other services.
So, Al, can I just see you one second before you continue?
Yeah. Almost done, but yeah.
Yeah, I know you are.
The last two would be part of future consideration. There is a recommended holdback per GuideHouse's recommendation, certainly less, I think, than what we thought we might have a year ago. But two of those projects, one is Kent County Broadband Installation. This project is intended to address gaps in broadband internet service throughout the county in urban, suburban, and rural communities. Staff is recommending the funding be made available to address issues identified at the conclusion of the broadband survey that is being conducted by Merritt Consulting and GuideHouse. Once infrastructure needs become known, funds to work with local municipalities and internet providers will be essential. So basically, this is an amount TBD based on both the survey and then the action plan that would be developed, I think, by the end of the first quarter. And then the second project that would be put more in that deferred funding would be Mary Freebed Children's Rehabilitation Hospital. This project is intended to increase capacity for inpatient rehabilitation for children. This project would help address rehabilitation voids in the community. The hospital will provide outpatient services such as physical therapy, lab services, twenty-four private inpatient rooms with space for parents to stay overnight, home-like areas for kids to practice everyday tasks, and more. And again, that is a TBD. And, I believe, that's it. So basically, of the nearly hundred-and-seventeen million that remains, we're recommending allocations. And again, there were ranges on some of these, and so basically, we picked the mid here to say a hundred and nine. That would leave less of a contingency than I think the board was looking for. But I think if you look at the costs that was in the proposal or the mid-range, if it was a, if it was a larger range, that's where we get the hundred and nine million dollars. And, that's it. So I think I'll come back up there for the Q and A.
Commissioners, I'm going to give you an opportunity to ask a question or make a comment, but I'm going to ask you to limit it to one comment this evening. We'll have plenty of opportunity to talk to staff and to leadership about these proposals as, as there will be a significant amount of conversation and refinement and, and response that we'll be going through between now and the time that we bring something to the board for its formal consideration. So, and not intending that we would debate all of that tonight, but if you do wish to make it, you don't have to, but if you do wish to make a comment or ask a question, you may do so. Well, I didn't expect no one to, okay, yes. Commissioner Ponstein.
I'm not going to pass that up. Thank you, Chair Stack. I just want to thank the staff and everyone. Great process, but at the end of the day, we had over three billion in, in request, and we can fund a hundred and nine million. And hopefully, this won't just sit on a paper that the needs of the people that spoke tonight and those that submitted proposals, that somehow we can work together to build Kent County better than it is now, and it's going to need different priorities and different spending. So appreciate the work, but there's still a lot of work out in the community that needs to be done for all the residents that live here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Womack.
Well, I guess mine's more a point of clarification. We get to ask one question tonight, and then when are these other opportunities going to be for question and dialogue? I don't understand the structure.
You can call me tomorrow morning, and we'll spend as much time as you need.
I have finance tomorrow morning, so.
Right after finance. We have executive committee first and then finance.
Yeah, well, that's, I haven't been invited to that. But that being said.
You're always invited to participate.
I know, sorry. But, yeah.
I did say seven-thirty in the morning, didn't I?
You did. So, so one question tonight.
Well, look, you can ask as many questions as you want. I'm inviting you commissioners to make a comment or ask a question, but there were twenty-six, twenty-eight projects here, and I'm going to assume that all the commissioners have lots of questions. I'm just suggesting, we're not going to peak all those questions out tonight, and I don't want you to not have all of them answered, so invite you to take as much time as you need over the course of the next two weeks to do that.
All right. Then can I make my comment?
You may.
Or do I get back to the bottom of the line? I'm fine either way.
Okay.
Well, I mean, my comment is, I'm going to echo the, the thanks to staff. My only edit would be, these aren't staff recommendations, this is what staff heard from us in the community. So, so it's not like you are recommending, you don't have to comment on that. I mean, again, I, I trust your work, and it wasn't just, you listened well, so I thank you. My main comment is, a lot of these projects, and something on the executive committee agenda tomorrow, a lot of these projects don't have connection to public transportation. Even the kids in Lowell can't get to the new fairgrounds because there isn't public transportation options in Lowell for people under sixty outside of hours. So when we really look at some of these really cool projects, I know the Mobility Task Force is on the agenda tomorrow, so I want us to continue to look at what is some other infrastructure we as a county should be providing, especially since our friends on the east side of the state in three separate counties overwhelmingly supported local villages for public transportation. So how do we provide mobility? An economic mobility, absolutely, but then it's like, the one that strikes me is junior achievement. You can't get there from here by transit. And so, but you can, you can go become an apprentice somewhere, which again, I love apprentice programs, and I think they're great, but if you really want to be a junior achievement and become an owner and what all, you better have a good bike. So let's think about mobility, real infrastructure, and I'll send some more questions at seven-thirty tomorrow.
I better schedule more time with you. All right, Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I'm just elated at the great work of the staff and those that worked on the recommendations, making sure that, you know, the post, the pre-work that was put in, making sure we knew eligibility, sustainability, and some of those important factors that we graded upon. My question would be this to our administrator. We published and circulated our grading from our work sessions publicly, which may have raised expectations of some of the people that were graded high compared to some of those who were graded low, and some of those who were graded low, who do have some great opportunities that they want to present to the county and to the residents, have made it on our final list. So my question would be, as we talk about the staff recommendation and as commissioners being the voices of our different areas and districts, what portion of the grading played into these recommendations? What portion of beyond going, looking at the grading, finding out eligibility, sustainability, and the factors that the staff was looking at, what were some of the things within that quagmire that came, brought your final results for clarity for some of those that may have been graded higher on our distributed list on our website?
Well, with three-hundred-and-nineteen projects, certainly the preference ratings the commissioners gave played a major role. I mean, we started out with the top twenty-five and worked down from there. And clearly, even if you looked at wanting to fund the top twenty-five, it was well over the hundred-and-seventeen million just to do that. And so it was really more of a process of looking at what was indicated as a higher priority, and then basically looking at where we thought that project could come in. You'll see that not all came in at the requested amount. And, and then also, I think, you know, every single thing that happened, all the input we've had, all the meetings where people have talked, all the community forums, the surveys, the commissioners ranking, the proposals themselves, you know, we did do a deep dive with every single one as far as GuideHouse's review, and sustainability and eligibility were all some of the factors we looked at as well. Yeah.
Okay, I want to thank you and the staff for your work, and I look forward to our future work sessions and the rest of the process we'll go through before we get to the finalization of these recommendations. I just want to thank the staff, because I know there's a whole lot of work behind the scenes that we don't have a chance to see, but that people, how much we appreciate that work.
Commissioner Womack.
Thank you, Chair. I just also want to reiterate my thanks to the staff for all of the work that went into this, this, this recommendation of really good proposals. I just would like to know, again, this is a great list of projects, and I would concur with Commissioner Womack that some of the, I didn't expect some of these in here because they were graded a little bit lower, but I mean, again, understand kind of you all have enough pick, trying to gather additional information to make sure that, you know, each proposal that is, is on this list could move forward. I just would like to just make sure that the communities that were most impacted by COVID are adequately represented in this list, and just wondered how, what type of work, I guess, was done to ensure that, you know, that the, that the communities were, that the COVID, the ARPA dollars were really meant to help, you know, make whole are represented fully in this list and, and are reflected in what the community said that they would like for us to do with these dollars.
And we certainly did get additional guidance from, from GuideHouse on that. Obviously, while we used the ZIP codes, we used, I think, just looking at disparities in housing, you know, a twenty-million-dollar investment in housing does hit an area of our population in addition to everybody who needs affordable housing that is more disparately impacted. The job training as well was an area where we focused on ways to help people attain higher education, certification, licensures, to be able to make more money, to afford better homes, and, and everything else. So I think as you look at the different areas, that was definitely a lens we were looking through continuously, because that is part of the ARPA Act as well, you know, to look at things through that lens. And I think that when you look at youth being disparately impacted, that we, we really tried to provide something that would be uplifting to our populations that were disparately impacted.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm sure I'll have another question, but I'll have to wait until that time comes. Thank you.
We'll take, we'll take them all eventually, yeah. All right, Commissioners Gags.
Thank you, Chair. Um, you know, of course, I'll join in with everyone. I'm thanking the staff, this is a whole lot of work, and it's appreciated. I've got a few more ideas of some more work. Number one is, I do think what I, a little bit of what I'm hearing and what I'd like to see is on the spreadsheet that we're given, if we can have something that, that does indicate that the ratings that it got from the commissioners, I know I can go look it up and. up and do all across things, but it would be wonderful if you could save me a little time on that, because there were a few things here that, that kind of surprised me that they're on here. Number two, on some of these projects, especially on the construction projects, that if you look at the total cost or the ask, and then the recommendation, which on many of these construction costs is, is not equal to the ask. And, and, you know, you can give me a 30-second answer if you want, Al, or you can, or we can talk later, but what kind of contingency are we going to have that this project comes to fruition and that, you know, this stimulates a capital campaign that, that does get to, to the amount? And then three, on the internal project on Parks and Greenways. So it looks like we've combined like two or three different asks on Parks. I know we had Trails, we had something from the foundation, we had internally on, on the Parks Department and others. So I, you know, I would prefer that we, like we are doing for most of the things here, actually name the projects that, that we want to go with. I think in the various Parks projects, there were some that were, that were rated rather low and some that were rated rather high. And I wonder if we can, instead of deciding this later, just go ahead and decide it now, why we're sort of on this project, or at least what kind of buckets that we wanted to go into, because I do think there were at least one or two projects that, that were, I think the commission has spoken pretty clearly on where it wants to, wants to go or doesn't want to go. So those are my three thoughts.
If I can maybe interject first, just so it's clear, the, the recommendation, the recommendations that we're receiving from staff will now have to go into our consideration. Ultimately, before we have a resolution that we approve, those questions, I think, would have to be resolved. So by the time we get a resolution on a funding, if it is 10 million there, it would be 10 million for projects A, B, C, and D, whatever they are. If it's not 10 million, it could be 8 million. I suppose, well, it could be anything we want it to. These are recommendations only, subject to our ultimate decision, so. But yes, I agree that we would expect to have those delineated with specificity. I guess they don't have to be, but I'm going to assume that most commissioners want to have that clear.
So to address your first two questions, for a project where we recommended construction less than what was requested, that involved a contact with the organization proposing the project to make sure they were comfortable that they could still meet their goals with that reduced amount. And in some cases, you know, they've been looking for funding from a number of different sources, including the state in some cases, and so their mix has changed even since the process has started in some cases. And I would say that we, at the time you make your selections, we would recommend that you have a timeframe for an organization to have their, their financing stack completed. And if it is completed, then it's a go-ahead, and if it isn't completed, that you would then reallocate the funding to make sure that we meet the December 31, 2014 realoca, or allocation deadline and December 31, 2016 completion.
Did I say 16?
Yeah, 14 is 16.
God, my brain is stuck somewhere in the past.
24 and 10 years ago.
Okay, December 31 of 24 and December 31 of 26. Allocation and spendout. I'll go back into the past in about an hour or so.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. And I'd like to thank the staff as well. I know that this was a lot of work. I think all the commissioners who also participated. I just have two things that I'd like to kind of point out. I want to see where's the African community being taken care of, the Asian community, the Bosnian community, the Indian community, what about my veterans, as well as our immigrant and migrant workers. I don't see anything specifically pointing to those particular populations. And we know how the immigrants add to our economy, and I want to make sure that they feel a part of this whole process. So very important for our African community and our African-American community as well. The other thing is looking at the shortfall. So we're looking at the AYA, which I totally support. However, we're recommending $2 million, but they need 19 million. So how is that shortfall going to be made up? And if we can't, if they can't get the project off the ground because we're not giving them enough money, will we reallocate that to something else?
Yeah, I would say, first, and maybe Al can say that as well, or comment on it, but my understanding on that one is it is proposing funding a subcomponent of the overall project, it's not the entire project.
The health, the health subcomponent, yes. We have had communication with them regarding that.
And I think the other one, what happens if we did agree and decide and vote to approve funding at a certain level, if that organization's not capable or can't get the stipulations met, the timing of it, I'm presuming we'll set time deadlines in here early enough that if the money has to come back, we'll have time to reallocate it soon. Commissioner Hennessy.
Says, this is really quite a, a list, and it is fairly well-rounded with, you know, a few thoughts being given today on, on ways to improve it or to, you know, other things to think about. I'm real curious as to, you know, getting a, a better timeline. We know we have the December of '24 and the December of '26 deadlines, but how, you know, how are we going to? I mean, if we think we've done a lot of work now, getting everybody and having the timelines and making sure that they're being met so that we don't lose money because of somebody, you know, not being able to put the project together, you know, what, what kind of a timeline are we going to be looking at from this point forward?
I gave Linda two weeks to have all the contracts done.
Right. I mean, I, we've already talked a little bit that that's her next thing, is to work on all the contracts. And so, I mean, this, so we're really going to have a lot of work ahead of us before this really gets going.
Yeah, this is, this is not the end of this process by any means. In fact, it may be the bulk of the work is still ahead of us yet to, to get over the finish line. I would say that with respect to all of the projects that we ultimately agreed to fund, there would be some level on some date, that may not be the same one for all of them. There has to be some date where they'd have to verify that they can, in fact, finish the project, finish the mission. And if they can't, it would have the capacity of coming back. But I don't want to say that would be the same date for all projects.
Okay. You're going to have timelines that'll be individualized then. What other timelines will we be needing as a commission? We have the, to approve the total proposal, that'll be coming up probably before the end of the year.
It's anticipated, yeah, we'll, we'll absorb these recommendations. I'm sure we'll have deliberations and conversations. Questions will be asked, and we'll then have to eventually focus that on, on a final decision. I'm, I would like to have that decision before the board on December 6. If, if that's not possible, if we're still engaged in discussions and we're not ready to go, then the next meeting is December...
17.
17, ho, ho, ho. And, and that's really the last meeting of the year. So the, we don't want this to go into next year, because we all know that there's a significant change in the, in the makeup of this commission next year, so the target is to get this done this year. December 15, I'm sorry.
Okay. The other thing is, I, the Road Commission is in here, and at first we were told that the Road Commission did not qualify, that maybe they had their own money or that Road Commission projects were not going to be qualified.
I'll let Al answer that, but I think that the answer had to do with the different, some of it was the matching part of it, and the other was their own projects.
Yeah, so they had asked for 10 million for projects and 10 million to put into the formula. The 10 million to put in the formula wasn't eligible. In fact, under ARPA, the road projects weren't eligible at all. But if you look at revenue replacement, they did lose 8.5 million. I mean, that's not the formula answer, that's the cash out-of-pocket answer. 8.5 million is what they lost, and so that is something that could be funded.
It's to make up for revenue loss.
Correct. Yeah, at least a portion of it.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to revisit, I've got other questions, but I'll be brief tonight in the spirit of trying to keep things on task. But I want to revisit the Parks line and kind of piggyback off of Commissioner Skanks's comments. My question was, initially, the staff recommendation for the Greenway project was 2.5 million. So is that safe to assume that the remainder of the Parks projects would be this, the remaining 7.5 million? Is that the, would that be the staff's recommendation? I guess that's my first question.
So the, the recommendation that went in from, the 2.5 was the Cannonsburg match. We had put in 6 million for the Greenway.
Okay.
And so I would think you could do 8 million for the Greenway and then 2 million for other projects, or 7 million in 3, or 6 in 4. That's kind of the range I think we're looking, but I would hope, I would recommend the board would put at least 6 million in for the Greenway.
Okay. And I, I bring that up too, and that's even more so to my, my overall point. You know, we've kind of went away from the Parks Foundation request that rated pretty high in the, in our rating session, and that was a $20 million ask. And I know we were supposed to keep those numbers kind of independent of each other, but I think that was an indication that there was a fair amount of support from commissioners to do a significant amount for Parks. So I'm just, I'm interested in kind of looking at that as we talk about what are the individual project needs. And we talked about that before. You know, if we're going to say we're going to do 6 million for the Greenway, you know, or 8, I, I'm not sure, not to say $2 million isn't a lot of money, but the park system across the whole county, I'm worried that that's not going to have the kind of transformational impact that we'd like to, that we'd like to achieve, so.
I think you're making the point that we're not done yet. I, I believe Parks rated the number, the foundation was the number five rated project. The Greenway was number 15, so they're out of 300, they're both pretty high up, but you're right, we need to figure that out before we get over the finish line. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. A few brief comments. First, you know, again, echo the, the appreciation of staff for this, for this impressive work. You know, I, I certainly want to call a few particular projects, though many of them are truly stellar. You know, very excited to see the Kent County Homes Fund in here. You know, has been discussed that the potential to have some degree of a match with the partnering CDFI to grow this fund even further, to make a really sizable and historic investment in affordable housing, given the crisis, is, is really impressive. Similarly, you know, as I've, as I've gone through these different line items, you know, I frankly actually became more and more interested, the more and more I, it was, after seeing it presented here and reviewing it again in the, in the proposal book, is the Hispanic Center's own application, the development of their own CDFI, I think is a really interesting concept, especially since ARPA is already very limited in how we can support small business growth and outside of direct, how the, how that particular business was directly impacted by the pandemic itself. So that I certainly find is very interesting. If I have any comment and, or additional comment, it is just to note, you know, while these are, you know, for instance, the Road Commission's line and the broadband item in the proposed third quarter funding, I would just want us to keep in mind the other federal funds that will become available, right? That's not to diminish their merit, but I would hate for us to utilize this funding source, which is, even with its restrictions, more flexible when there are defined funding coming down the pike. And especially if that means having to say no to other projects that are also deserving. So, thank you.
Thank you. I would add to the, the comments with respect to the projects on this first quarter funding. The reason that they're there is, I understand, is that there's significant issues and questions and further investigation that would be undertaken before it would rise to the level, if at all, to an actual recommendation. Yes, sorry, twice your brief.
Thank you, Chair. I, you know, just wanted to thank staff and Al and Stan. I know there's a lot of back and forth and re-looking at the numbers and making sure, you know, we could agree on various things. So this is definitely a document that was reviewed many times, but I do think it should be pointed out that, you know, that not every municipality has used their ARPA funds to impact the community in this way. You know, there's some municipalities that maybe used a, a small percentage for the public to apply and, you know, allocate towards certain projects. So I think it's pretty significant that we've been working, you know, in this transparent way with our community to fund, you know, multimillion-dollar projects and not just use it for internal county dollars.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? The only other thing I would add, well, a couple of other things. First, there, there remains some amount of holdback regardless of how we handle some of these and the fact that there are some ranges here. And of course, a recommendation may or may not be taken, and one would hope that we're getting close, though. However, it's anticipated that there are some holdback funds here for assuring that, that the projects we do select are, are successful. And I think that there also remain a few projects that are in some level of review that may come back into the third or first quarter of next year or maybe even later, but, but that there would be intense, that all of that money will get allocated and allocated in a way that gets used. So there may be some additional projects that still come down the road. All right. With that, we will have our second public comment. And if there is anyone still on the list, and I see you have cards in hand, so we'll open it again to public comment, and the, the condition stipulation for public comment is with the first one, still apply, so if you will go ahead and call the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we have five cards. First up is Micah Perkins to discuss no project, and on deck, we have Letitia Lipscomb.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nice to see you again, many familiar faces. Just a couple of comments about these projects as they're being considered, especially as it relates to construction, education. A lot of these projects are duplicating services which are already being done at no cost to the taxpayer. So as you're looking at funding for projects where there's more requests for money than you have money to spend, my suggestion would be to not duplicate things that are already happening. For example, my plumbers and pipe fitters that I come from spend about $450 million a year training our people. None of that is taxpayer money. Second piece of that construction process is that obviously there's a lot of construction going on. Again, considering that all of our training is done at no cost to the public, considering bid discounts for contractors that have Department of Labor apprenticeships would be a way of providing a nod to those contractors who are doing that training without asking the public to help with it. The final piece that I would like you to consider is the housing versus careers piece. Obviously, we do have a housing crisis here in West Michigan, no one's denying that. But while you're considering housing, also consider the fact that a lot of these housing projects could be viewed as subsidizing poverty. My industry consistently ranks as one of the most financially well-compensated careers you can get into, and the reason for that is that we hold up the high end of the wage scale. So as you're thinking about these construction training centers, as you're thinking about these housing projects, consider the sustainability of what you're achieving here. Are you contributing to long-term poverty, or is it the long-term actual prosperity of the community from not only affordable housing, but from meaningful financially well-compensated careers? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Letitia Lipscomb on Project 116, and on deck, we have Robert Upton.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Letitia Lipscomb, and it's a privilege to be before you this evening to reiterate the need for support for a truly transformational project in 49507. Commissioners, this moment... project in 49507. Commissioners, this moment is not about what's in it for me. This moment is not about greedy developers, displacement, or the ills of gentrification. This opportunity is about authentic, inclusionary, long-term engagement in response to 400-plus community resounding voices collectively saying, "Give my community the chance it deserves." This time is about saying yes to decades of disinvestment. So allow me to quickly outline for you once again what the Boston Square Together project and benefits that will come along with it, how they will provide positive impact for quality of life for everyday people for generations to come. 270 mixed-income housing units, 50 new homeowners, 30-plus new business opportunities, a one-acre park, a health clinic serving 10,000 neighbors in 49507, after-school programming for 100-plus youth, business-strong programs, and a community hub known as the community's front porch and living room that will provide shared workspace, a multi-purpose room, community-based programming, a health clinic, as well as a high-quality early childhood learning center for Black and Brown babies. Investment today further accelerates the vision, and any seed that you guys give will ensure that funding, that we can get this project across the finish line for neighbors. The time is ripe for neighbors to thrive and not just survive. Together, I believe we can.
Thank you.
Next, we have Robert Upton on Projects 268. Oh, thank you. We have Eric Brown on Project 304. And on deck, Rachel Verweis.
Good evening. Is it two minutes or three minutes? I guess it's two.
I think it's two, yes.
Okay.
No, I know it's two, sorry.
Let me be real quick. Responding as far as the use of funds, responding to the fear and reach, far-reaching public health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic by supporting the health of communities and helping households, small businesses impacting industries, nonprofits, and the public sector recover from economic impacts. That's one of the, one of the many uses of funds. I'm here in support of our proposal, absolutely in support of our proposal. I'm also in support of proposals, and I'm looking for those real quick. Numbers, 333, 239, 329, and our own 304. These are collaborative efforts to address economic impacts of what has happened during this coronavirus impact. I would also remind you of your own reports in 2019 that talked about, let me pull that one up. Economic security, racial inequality among top community health concerns in Kent County, your own reports. And my understanding of the use of funds is to be able to take an opportunity to make transformational impact in these areas with these one-time funds. A lot of what I heard here, I don't know, I don't know necessarily how those are transformational impacts that affect those census tracts that have been adversely affected by the pandemic and that have been exasperated through the pandemic. Collaboratively working with these other proposals, as well as a proposal that was submitted by Kyrie Bridgewater that included four historic organizations that dealt with these, dealt with these topics over decades, has not been able to, we hear nothing back on that. And we'd love to be able to have an opportunity that others had to talk about our proposals in collaborating for the community that has been disproportionately affected. And I would love to see a more equitable display of the monies, not what was submitted, but what is being submitted for, not the total amount submitted, but what is being submitted for allocation as a percentage to affect this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rachel Verweis, number 171.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Verweis with Project 171. I serve as the CEO at Safe Haven Ministries and want to thank you for giving us the time to connect and considering our collaborative proposal that is going to, I think, have transformational results in our county to address domestic violence. I'm inspired tonight because I think what we have heard over this time is that we are filled, a community filled with people who care and are really imaginative, and we do have the opportunity to transform systems and outcomes through these dollars. We hold in the space of serving victims of domestic violence this pain and possibility. Every day, our advocates across this county, across agencies, answer crisis calls. And in this last season of the pandemic, we've seen those crisis calls increase 25%. As you've heard tonight, our homicides have doubled in the county. And those homicides are news stories that come across the news, but they're people. They're stories of our neighbors, our friends, our kids' classmates. They're people you know in schools. They've been teachers, and they have been young children. In October, we recognized the deaths across the whole state of Michigan. And one of the women who joined us, son, was killed in Lowell. And she urged us as a community to do more to address system-wide change. And that is being done because of the collaborative multi-sector work that the DVCCRT has led for decades in our community. And we're at a moment in time where I think we would be able to look back from this point of investing millions of dollars, of changing a court system, to see that our whole community moves to a place of thriving. So thank you for your consideration and these extra meetings that you've allowed us to be a part of.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that is all the cards I have.
Okay. So is there anyone else that wants to address the Board? Yes. Oh, I think you already addressed the Board. Did you, Al?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can you talk?
Sorry, one for us tonight. All right. If not anyone else, that is the last of the items on our agenda. I just remind Commissioners, now that we have received the recommendation from staff in this process, the next stage is for us to go through that in detail and to review and to ask questions. If you do have concerns or questions, please reach out to Al or myself. We have not scheduled a second work session on this. We can certainly consider that, but I think the thinking is that we would try to ask as many questions and answer as many questions on a one-on-one basis as possible. And this is, this is like high on the list to get completed this year, so we'll make the time available. So I encourage you to reach out and ask, and we'll get there. And the target still is to try to get this to the Board on a refined project resolution by December 6. All right. If nothing else, we are adjourned.